This time I'll call the April 8, 2021 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have any additions to the agenda, so I would move that we approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of April 1st meeting, fund expenditures of $397,985.30. The wire payment is a security wire, which was $5,687, and contract services of $2,500. We also have abatements of $2,297.42 and added tax $43.60.
I'm moved to accept the consent agenda. Second?
We have the motion and the second for acceptance of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ron, we'll start with you for commission comments. It's been pretty quiet in the southern part of the county and things are going pretty well. I want to take just a few minutes to thank the employees from Dixon County for doing all the hard work they're doing and putting up with the the cause of the mask and things like that. So I appreciate that.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, I've got, I'm sure you, other two commissioners got a notice in the KAC. Try to have the KCCA either in person or virtual. I responded and I can do it either way.
Okay.
That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay. And I also received that, and that's an annual meeting that they have and is scheduled for liberal.
Yeah.
And and they moved that around the state, but also one of the directors of that is from that area. Earlier today, we had our department head and elected officials meeting, and so they gave those here gave us an update, a little bit of snapshot of what was going on, their particular departments or their offices. And it's just amazing, all of the work that does take place. I mean, there's so many facets involved from roads and bridges to 4H and IT and emergency preparedness and landfill. I mean, just on and on. But everything's running smoothly and it's good to hear those reports. Also, I have an economic development meeting that I will be attending. And the county participates in that financially, but as a representative, I'm an ex officio, so I'm a non-voting member. So it's just more for informational purposes to be there. And if I'm not able to be there, Craig is usually the one that will fill in on that. I also have a Central Kansas Mental Health meeting. And it's a regular board meeting taking place this coming Monday. I don't have anything else. I, we do have a couple of proclamations. I think I'll wait on those just in the event that there were some representatives that said they would try to be here. And just in the event that they show up in a little bit, we're going to set that aside. So we'll go on to public comments at this time. So if there's anyone that has joined us that would like to make a comment or would and such, if you'd give your name and particular issue or comment that you have, and we would entertain comments at this particular time. And just waiting to see if anyone wants to. Yes, now I've got here Lori Megan Armstrong. And yes, if you have a question, go ahead, Lori.
Good morning. I was hoping to find out, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. No sense in talking if you can't be heard, right? I was calling to find out if you guys have heard anything further about the Eisenhower Center possibly opening. I've been visiting with businesses downtown and other parts of our area. And they're like, well, with the Eisenhower concept being canceled, is it going to open before the summer begins? And I know you guys aren't in charge of that, but you did such a good job bringing the director in to kind of give some more information about that firsthand. I've called up there and I can't, I can't get hold of a person. So I was just curious if there's been any rumblings about that. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any information on that, but I'm sure they'll make the announcement. And you are correct in that it's not a local decision on that as far as any of the elected officials, but even there at the Presidential Library that they have some benchmarks and guidelines nationally that they would receive. But I think you're correct. Anything we can do to encourage them towards opening? And hopefully as numbers improve and other things, maybe, maybe that will take place. Okay. Rhonda? If you'd like to go ahead, please.
This is Rhonda Boulprey, 201 Northeast 8th Street. I'd like to recommend folks to attend this upcoming meeting concerning the National Heritage Areas. It's going to be Monday, I understand, at the Hitching Post in the evening. And we are concerned that belonging to this area might jeopardize some of our property rights eventually. I think their intentions are suspect, shall we say. They've already got a board established, which none of us have had any input on. It's not an elected position to be on their board. So there's no way to hold them accountable for any management decisions they might make and so on. So it's concerning. And I think we might learn more at this upcoming meeting on Monday. We will probably want to ask you county commissioners to make, make a resolution not to belong to this heritage area eventually, just out of caution. So you will want to be as informed as possible in order to make that decision. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work for the county and have a good meeting.
Okay, thank you. And it was brought up at the last meeting that that was going to be at the Hitching Post. It's an informational meeting. And and so, and I know there's some concern on if it's an overreach or what ramifications that it would happen to carry, but some of that is unknown also. Just if you're on real quick, Rhonda, is that something where they want reservations? Is that's a meeting, it's not a dinner necessarily, it's a meeting, correct?
I don't believe there are any reservations required, and I don't think it's a meeting. I think it starts later, like seven-ish or 6:30-ish, something like that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Yeah, and you might get information to the newspapers so they can put that on there. I think sometimes they put things in there as far as when something is going to meet on, they have a calendar.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea. Thank you for suggesting that.
Yeah, Lynn, we, if more than one of us want to attend, we need to get a little bar so she can put it on the website too, so.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep that in mind. I'm not sure that I'll be there, but I, possible. And I don't know.
Well, I, I.
You're on it.
I, just what I hear, one of us ought to attend, so.
Okay.
I don't know, but you know.
You might put it on the website just in case two of us end up there. But I, I think probably what will happen is just one of us will attend. And of course, I mean, if, Ron, if you want to also, I mean, I mean, we're not trying to limit it to one. It's just.
Give the opportunity.
The website.
Give the opportunity, you know, more than one of us show up, we're not violating.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Okay. Good point. I still am going to hold off on the proclamation. I think what we'll do, I'll put that in with notices and communications. And so Brad, if you'd want to go ahead and give your administrative report.
Okay. We'll start out with the year-to-date budget report from Janelle. You've got in your packet earlier in the year, and I won't go into detail unless you have anything on that, Janelle.
No.
I wouldn't, missed her. Sales tax looks consistent and then we've been, you know, on that.
No, I got, I know we've, I don't have this right hand. Our sales tax, that he had 1.3 million for the last several years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And this last year, we've obviously seen an increase, but.
Right, right. Which is just up so.
Yeah, I know. We talked about a year ago.
Pleasantly surprised.
And if there is more traveling, I mean, I think that's going to bode well for our sales tax. But obviously, Holmes is selling lots of vehicles and Loves and 24/7 and.
People getting out and about and traveling and.
Around Abbling, Anne Harrington and Chaplin, Solomon, all of them.
Yeah, it's what they did, so.
Okay.
We did, did move into our, with the Sheriff's Department yesterday into the administrative offices in addition. Which does a couple of things that allows the Sheriff's Department to get moved into their new portion. But it also, more importantly, opens up the, the existing courthouse, the sheriff's offices and administrative offices for construction to take place. And those crews have been waiting on us to get out for a couple of weeks. So the demo crews have been running about eight people on the crew the last few weeks. They showed up with eight additional people on Monday. So they were, they were loaded for bear and they were ready to hit the ground running. And we have now released that to them. So essentially, they have everything with the exception of the actual jail they can, they can be working on. And and as I reported, I'll kind of jump right into the jail report. A lot of moving parts going on there. The upper floor has been framed. The framers have been in there and all the sheet rock has been moved in and it's stacked up, ready to go. The electricians are putting in conduit and electrical outlets and getting ready to start wiring. So it's, it's progressing very well. The basement is finishing up the demolition down there. They have, as of yesterday, the whole basement was pretty well open. They had all the ceilings out and everything removed, getting ready to pull the framers in down there as well. And then the main floor now, Treasury Clerk's Office Registered Deeds, all the floors have been taken up. And they'll start working on the ceilings and stuff. Now we're out of it because that's rather loud, loud works. As far as the jail itself, the EFS, the bricklayers are finishing up. The bricklayers are finishing up on the north side and then they'll move around and get the, the fascia on the south side done, and then that will be complete. The deciding people, the EFS people are planning to come in next week, I think. And they will also be there to finish on the north side. The beige limestone looking stuff, they install that. They'll get that done on the north side and then move around and hopefully on the courthouse where that gets filled in between the windows will be ready for them at that point. Let's see. We did, did figure out the fire, fire truck parking and those things. That's got to be done along with sidewalks outside. The painter started in the booking areas and then the detention cell, holding cell area this week during the priming. State Fire Marshal did, and do the inspection Monday on the admin portion and gave us a blessing to occupy that, obviously. So that's what we were, were waiting on, hoping that went well. As Jerry said, I'm working on the access control so that we can get that all up and running. We've got that partially running now to where cross parts will work for some of the staff. HVAC is continuing to be installed, the truck lines and stuff upstairs, working on that. So we're working on, Lloyd Builders is working on getting the additional cost of what the change order would be to upgrade the concrete for the south. Other than that, we're, we're in about as full, fullest swing of construction and everything as you could get. And things, you know, things are progressing well. We're having, we're having hurdles come up every hour. I mean, little things, but it's always some, but that's normal, I think, under, under project of this magnitude. So the superintendents are constantly looking me up, asking questions and things, and that's the way it works. I mean, that's part of the process, so that's what moves us forward. We talked a little bit in the work session about the, doing some more work on the Harrington EMS station. Mid-May, that's scheduled with the contractor that did it last year for us. The building continues to settle. It's covered under warranty. So as you heard, Chancey said they'll be in and take about three days to do that. They'll, they'll throw their, all the crews at it that they need to get it done. We have to move out of the building, vacate it and John's made arrangements, get us in the housing down there for our EMS staff. So that should be fairly seamless and hopefully this will be, be the final time we have to do it. So we did our weekly COVID call with the schools yesterday. And I'm happy to report that a little bit of our numbers in the school districts and our, by the school districts and plus St. Andrews is on there, continue to be negligible, I guess would be a good description, very low. I think we only had one positive test in all the school districts. The rest of them, they've got a few PUIs, persons under the investigation that they're monitoring. But for the most part, things are looking really well, knock on wood. So we want to keep it that way. Hopefully it will, it will continue. And then crews are gearing up. I gave you a report in the work session about the, the summer pavement jobs that we're going to be doing. We've got some stuff to approve here shortly as far as mastic sealant. And, and then I'll have, I think I've got three locations I'll put on the agenda for next week for bridge materials for our guys to build bridges. So other than that, that's all I've got today.
Okay, thank you. We'll hear from Doug and then we'll move to our proclamation.
Anything, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here. We did have two proclamations, and so we're going to go ahead and have those now. That works for you. And if you'd go ahead and introduce yourself and figure what, and we'll hear the proclamations.
Of course. I'm Carly Tinkler. I'm the Campus Sexual Assault Advocate for D-VAC in Salina. And we serve 10 counties, including Dickinson County. And so April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, so we are asking that you proclaim it Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Dickinson County. We have a variety of different opportunities. Unfortunately for me as a college, there's only one college that is allowing activities on campus. So I'm at Kansas Wesleyan and K-State Polytechnic. But K-State unfortunately is not to a point of having activities. So we do have a speak night coming up at Ad Astra Coffee House and Books on the 30th, where any survivor, anyone who wants to share anything, whether that be spoken word, poetry, et cetera, is very welcome to do so. Any member of the public is very welcome to come and enjoy that. So the 30th at 7:00 p.m. And then the proclamation to the people of Dickinson County, Kansas, readings. Where sexual violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem in Kansas. And whereas sexual violence is any sexual act that's perpetrated against someone's will, which includes sexual assault, rape, unwanted touching, threatened sexual violence, exhibition of them and verbal sexual harassment, all types of, and all types of sexual violence include or involve victims who do not consent, who are unable to consent or refuse to allow the act. Whereas one in three women and nearly one in six men experience some form of contact sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas one incident of rape is reported to Kansas law enforcement every seven hours, 20 minutes and 55 seconds. Over 5,300 people receive services for sexual assault from Kansas victim advocacy organizations every year. Whereas these statistics do not represent the true prevalence of sexual violence due to underreporting and sex offenders often targeting people they perceive as vulnerable, less powerful and less credible. Whereas the offender is known to the victim in the vast majority of cases, 80% of those in Kansas. Whereas the effects of sexual violence may be felt directly after or for many months or many years later. And confusion, anger, sadness, shame, guilt, helplessness, hopelessness and self-blame are all common reactions to sexual violence. As the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, also known as D-VAC, provides 24/7, 365 days a year, free confidential and voluntary services to victims of sexual violence in Dickinson County. Whereas D-VAC is available, offers our phone numbers, 785-827-5862 or our 800 number. We ask that you would proclaim the month of April Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Okay, thank you for reading that. The awareness of that and educational part, but also the recognition that it is a problem that we have here in society. And so thank you for your work in Central Kansas. We do need to have a motion to go ahead and adopt this proclamation that has just been read.
I'll make a motion to accept April as the Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Second? We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we also have, I guess it was just a copy of it. You probably were throwing, you think, what's the?
I was like, wow, there's two. I was like, maybe you guys were doing Child Abuse Awareness Month.
Yeah, so, so anyway, thank you for being here and, and I'll get it signed.
I can do that, Lynn.
Brad, I want to get a picture.
To give desk.
Okay.
However you want to do.
Just to join me, stand there, hold, that'd be fine. Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as notices and communications, we had the General Technology Magazine that we had received. And that's all that I had. Was there any other communications or notices that you have received?
There was nothing on the computer.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on. We do not have any resolutions or unfinished business. We do have on our agenda other business. The first is to consider a proposal from Hall Brothers, and this is a mastic seal for one of our roads for summer of 2021. And Brad, do you have a kind of summary of that?
Yes, in your package you get the proposal, but that, this is a mastic seal application that would be done to 4.17 miles of Solomon Road, 4.4 miles of 2200 Avenue, 7.1 miles of Union Road and a half a mile of D Street down by Harrington. The total application cost would be $335,056.12. Martin did indicate that that was just per unit up slightly from what it was last year, so.
And you might comment, I know we covered it in work study session, but just for the sake, if someone wasn't with us during that or, or for the newspaper, kind of the purpose of doing something like this.
This is.
Up in the road.
Certainly, this is, the mastic seal is a process where they spray, it almost looks like oil, but they spray a material on the road that seals the road, seals the cracks and keeps moisture from penetrating the road, which is a road surfaces besides overweight is road surface, the worst enemy. And so this actually seals the road. It prevents us from having to go in and do an overlay or crack ceiling or things more, more often. And the road surfaces that we initially started with eight or 10 years ago, I guess, was a fair road where we kind of didn't experiment. And we're just getting to the point where we're getting ready to overlay that one this year. So it has held us off six or eight or nine years from having to do that overlay and, and that, that work. And so it's a good preventing maintenance. It's kind of, it, it's not a, it does what crack seal does, but it doesn't do what overlay does. And depending on who you talk to, a lot of people think it makes the surface drive a lot smoother. When in fact, it's just a spray coating. Some of that, we, you know, some people think that's psychological too. I happen to be in that psychological group. I think it does make the road drive a little smoother, so. But it'll, it'll end up putting a completely black surface on it. We'll then have, have striped and it'll last for a number of years, so.
And the funding mechanism for this?
He will be taking this out of his regular budget, I believe.
Yeah.
I know, yes.
But we do have sales tax money that we use also set aside for bridges or unexpected road maintenance. And so on. Okay. We need a motion to approve this contract with Hall Brothers.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. This is from the Hall Brothers' proposal for the mastic surface seal for Solomon Road, as Brad mentioned. 2200 Avenue, also Union Road and D Street. And it's $335,056.12. Any other comments or discussion before we vote on the motion?
Yeah, last year when we did the overlay on Jeep Road from 18, or 18 down to, again, 2500 Avenue. And then we all tipped mastic seal from the city of Abbling to Detroit. A lot of people thought we'd overlaid it. It looked, I mean, you know, and really appreciated it. And so, I mean, when you put it on, on a good purpose, it's already, you know, been done. It really makes it look like it's a new road. And I'll agree with Brad, I think it, you know, made it drive better.
Okay. Any other comment?
Psychologically.
Well, it's, maybe it's, people are driving newer cars. No, it all helps. And we want to extend the life of our roads and add value to them and.
This is one of those cases where we're truly getting the most bang for our buck because we're doing a process that extends the life of that road out.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to the next item. And that is a truck for the highway shop. And Brad, you have a report on that if you'd go ahead and give that.
Yes, we've got, we're due to replace the pickup that we use for a service truck. Now, and so Martin has obtained bids from three vendors, those being MHC out of Salina, Kansas Truck out of Wichita and the Freestone Chrysler out of Fairfield, Texas. This is the, the bids, the specs include a, a ton, equivalency of a ton four-wheel-drive truck outfitted with a service body and a crane with a number of options. And it also includes LED lighting and things of that nature. And the options that would outfit a welder and the things that they need to have on that truck. So this particular vehicle is turnkey. It's designed for this type of work. And it's designed for field service work on, on heavy equipment. The crane is a 7,500-pound capacity crane that would allow our guys to lift. One example that comes to mind is when hydraulics break on a, on a snowplow and they, and it's sitting out on the road and they can't lift the plow up to move it. The crane would allow them to lift the plow up, pin it in place and continue on down the road or work on it in place. So the truck that we're currently using for that is a smaller truck with a service body on it, does not have the crane. Over the years, you know, we, we started out, I don't know how long ago now, shortly after I'd become administrator, we hired our own mechanic. And then we eventually hired a second mechanic. We do the majority of all of our service work on all county vehicles. And we've, we've come to have a pretty, pretty good shop and crew of guys down there. So this will allow them to do more service work in the field where a lot of things break down. I'd have to bring them back in. The truck that they're currently working out of will be transferred over to one of the work crews to use. I don't know if it'll be the bridge or the, the road crew, but they'll utilize it for the remainder of its life. The one they're using will be retired and sold up for void because it's due to go by by itself. This is, this is expensive, but the life expectancy on it should be minimum 10, if not 15 years. No more miles and, you know, it's not something that travels a lot of miles. But it will allow our guys to do a safer and more expedient job and service work out in the field. So the, the cost of the, the three companies bid three different, three different vehicles. MHC out of Salina bid a 2021 Ford F-550 XL 4x4. Wichita bid a 2020 Ram 5500, which is the same size truck. And then the, the company out of Texas bid a Ram 5500 in the 2019 model, which is what they have available and they can sell. Our recommendation is not the low bid, but it is almost a low bid. The 2021 Ford, we feel is a better buy for a couple of reasons. One, it's a Ford. We can have a service since the lineup. One, it's a Ford, we can have a service in Salina. The, along with Carter does, is a local service depot for the 550 version truck. It is $400 higher than the low bid for a 2019 truck. So we're not really comparing apples to apples exactly. But if you were to look at the newest vehicle we're getting for the price, it is certainly a little bit. So the next bid for the 2020 Dodge from Wichita was $149,000. So a considerable difference. Our recommendation is to, is to purchase a 2021 Ford from MHC Salina for $127,934.21. That money will come from the special machinery account. We did not have this in this year's purchase. It was a few years down the road. We have bumped it up because of the need and Martin has removed a trailer and a pickup that was currently in this year's budget down to that point in the, in the cap and plan. Because once I was juggling these around, that's going to fill the other void. So we do have the money on hand to do it and if you have any money questions, she's the one to ask. Questions?
I move to accept that bid from Salina and MHC for $127,934.21.
All right. We have the motion and the second to accept the bid from MHC in Salina for $127,934.21. And Brad, how long would it take them to prepare this vehicle?
The delivery on it was, and truck will be delivered in May. The outfit will take six to eight weeks, so we're looking at, you know, an end of June for a suitable, so not very far.
Any other question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have is an executive session. So thank you for coming over and we appreciate all the work that you do. And, and on the executive session, it's for county commissioners only, so you'd be exiting anyway, so.
Thank you and I apologize for my.
Oh, it worked out fine, worked out fine. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we do have an executive session for non-elected personnel. And it would involve Brad and the commissioners. And we didn't think it was going to have anything technically attorney-wise that we need to have at this time. And so we, I would go ahead and make the motion that we go into executive session at 11:34 for 10 minutes.
I'll second that motion.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? This is for non-elected personnel, this executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. This gives us a minute or so to vacate and clean up.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Okay, you have a sudden muted. You, I believe, are coming back on, yeah. Okay, we have completed our executive session and I would move that we return to regular session.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We did have our 10-minute executive session for non-elected personnel. There's no thing further to discuss for our meeting. And so I would entertain a motion to.
Don't move. I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to adjourn, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.
I'm going to leave my pen here, Barb.
Would next week at the start of the work session, would you guys want to meet down there and do a quick walkthrough of what's going on? If you want to wait a little bit or?
I'm good.
At 9:15, 9:30.